Good evening. It's Thursday, March 27th. And would someone please make a motion to return to public session? Motion by Marjorie, second by Rory. All is in favor. So I know we normally would start with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we have Fourth Grade Orchestra waiting for us, so we're going to go watch a performance and move back momentarily.
I think that... No!
Nyack came out of nowhere last year.
I know they... They come...
They have three sisters that are the team.
Wow!
And the mothers... Mothers, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, parents. Good evening, administrators. And thank you so much for coming and being an audience to the Increase Miller Fourth Grade Orchestra tonight. My name is Faith Willett, and I teach elementary orchestra at Meadow Pond, Katona, and of course, Increase Miller. And tonight, I have members of the Increase Miller Fourth Grade Orchestra with me here. We are, in the month of March, we are celebrating Music in Our Schools Month, which is an initiative from the National Association for Music Education to spread music and public school music education programs all around the country. And so tonight, we would like to highlight for Music in Our Schools Month some of the incredible work that our fourth graders here have done. Every student on this stage started playing their instrument in this program just this year in this past September, and it's so incredible what they've all been able to achieve so far. We're going to be playing three songs for you tonight from our winter concert last month, so we hope you enjoy. Thank you all so much.
Look, he said we are not immediately beside each other.
We were just able to see the Increase Miller Fourth Grade Orchestra perform. It was amazing, really tremendous work by young people to learn a very difficult instrument, and they were perfectly together. So congratulations to all of them, and thank you so much for organizing that, Neil. I don't know if that was you again, but...
Yeah, Kim.
Thank you. I'm Kim. Thank you for organizing. It's just really delightful to start the evening with something so special. So can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the federal which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberity and justice for all. Excellent. So welcome this evening. We're looking forward to talking more about our 2030 plan and also adopting our budget for the '25-'26 school year. So we're looking forward to that. Before we start with that, we'll start with some board announcements. And I just, I'm sorry, I should have just said also Faith Willett is the fourth grade teacher, and I didn't recognize her, but she is doing an outstanding job in all of our schools, and we're lucky to have her. So board announcements, I would like to just congratulate, we had some really outstanding performance by our science research students at the Regeneron competition, and just really congratulations to so many of them who won in different domains of science, different styles of science research. That was really amazing. And last meeting, I forgot to congratulate our DECA competitors who did outstanding, and I believe two are actually going to the national competition, and this was our first year back at DECA. And so just to do so well on the first outing is really tremendous. So I did want to recognize them. And if anyone else has any board announcements?
Just the great play performances or the musicals?
Musical, Grease.
Yeah, Grease and Forty Second Street.
Forty Second Street was last since last meeting also. Yes, amazing.
It's been a lot since last meeting. It's nice to see the campus coming alive again with the spring.
Yeah.
It's fun.
I thought Screenagers went really well. It was probably about 100 people there, and then Q&amp;A after. You know, it's a pretty powerful watch. I think for some people, it was shocking. Other people was reaffirming that they're kind of on the right path, and I think there was 50/50 for most people, kind of like, yeah, I get that, and maybe not. But it was a really nice event, really great. I'm happy that Playhouse was able to accommodate that, or PTO to be able to pull it off.
Yeah, thank you to the PTO and partnership with Bedford PTO, yes? So it's great to have that, just, you know, we're all sort of in it together. Our kids definitely overlap on a lot of their activities, so it's nice to have that partnership.
Julia, I just have a quick announcement.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to say that after six years serving on the school board, that I made a decision to not seek reelection for my third term. It's really been an honor to work alongside all of the dedicated educators, parents, community members to support our students and our schools. I'm really deeply grateful for all the trust that the community has placed in me, for the opportunity to contribute to the growth and the success of our district over the past five and a half years. And while I'm not continuing in my role, my commitment to our schools and my community remains strong, and I'm always certainly available. I want to thank you for your support, collaboration, and passion for education over the past five years. I look forward to seeing the district continue to thrive in the years ahead. It's been a real privilege for me to serve, and certainly has been one of the most rewarding pursuits in my life. I really enjoyed it. But I am delighted to be leaving it in the capable hands of Ray, administration, all of our teachers and staff, my fellow trustees, Immonzen. Thank you. I mean, I'm going to miss working with you guys terribly, but I know that your commitment and dedication to our students is unwavering, and I know that we'll continue to meet success. So thank you all very much. I'm here obviously for another couple of months, but I just wanted to make that announcement before, because we have an upcoming election on May 20th. People ought to consider running for the board. It's one of the most important civic duties that I performed. I would encourage people in our community to consider running for the board. It's a very, very rewarding pursuit. There's some work involved, but it's a very rewarding pursuit. I would highly recommend it to people who may be partially considering it. You still have another month to get your petition signed and get it in. I think the deadline is April 21st. So I would encourage community members who are watching to strongly consider a run for school board. It really is a wonderful civic duty to perform. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew that there was going to be an open seat.
Might be more than one open seat. There are three open seats.
There are three open seats.
Yeah. Any other board announcements? I don't have anything prepared, so I'll go next week.
Oh, that'll be exciting.
Okay. Then we will begin with our conversation about the 2030 plan.
Great, thank you. And just as we came out of that short concert there with Faith, and the board has so many different things that you were saying where they were looking at and doing, and so hopefully just for the next little bit of time, we could spend a little bit on the why and the connections in those pieces. So thinking about the kids in the back of your mind a little as we go through this next exercise. So I was, when I stayed there listening, I was saying, well, maybe we can use that a little bit tonight. So before we break out into some of our work, I'm just going to go ahead and provide a little bit more of an organization to the vision. So you either have it on your laptops, and you also have it in those clipboards that are in front of you, if you prefer to use that, and right there, it's the last document in there. So again, you will see on the front, as we've got on the screen there, is the Vision 2030, and then the idea about empowering all. The catchlight over there is lighting the path to success. So even that piece, the lighting the path to success and the empowering all, that kind of tagline, that piece came through the thousands, literally, of different conversations that took place. Some groups were as small as maybe a dozen or so, but other groups, especially at our campuses, were well over 100 of our teachers coming together at our PTO meetings. And so if you think about all those different conversations, you were into the tens, if not tens of thousands, of different conversations that took place. And so what I've got on the inside cover of that, you will see the process that went through, and you'll see at the top left there in the purple. So as the community may see this online and look at the document, we set this out again to our community last Friday, or Friday before, sorry, in relationship to this, gave everybody a link to that. And you could see the myriad of different groups that had those conversations. And basically, on the right-hand side, you will see the strategic plan where, and I just skimmed through here a little bit with you, again, it provides that clear roadmap for achieving those goals and responding to the changing needs over time in our district. And we think about, it was created then, it was co-created. This wasn't something that a handful of folks sat and, you know, in a room and came out with, hey, look at this, isn't this a great plan? This was co-created through, again, as I mentioned, through hundreds of different individuals and thousands of different conversations. And how we did that as we went through, it's identified as this idea about appreciative inquiry, looking at the positive things and inquiring from a space of thinking about the possibilities that exist. And so the short acronym there is identified as SOAR, strengths, opportunities, our aspirations, and our results. There's always something that we can work on and do better, and that's what this is about, is continuous improvement. So thinking in that mind and saying, what are we doing well that we can leverage to improve in the future? So then out of that, the groups identified, and we created, and we honed, and updated mission, vision, and collective commitment. And with a kind of, I'll call it like a point team, we basically on the front side met with a handful of teacher representation, a handful of administrative representation, a handful of students, a handful of PTO, and a few board members. And that was kind of our point team that started. And then as all that data came back and continued to be distilled down into what you see today, that group gave constructive feedback right at the end, as we started really trying to take some of the edges and smooth it off. And so that's where we landed here today with the vision element here. And then what came out of that were these identified as six pillars of light. And my colleague shared earlier today, it's not a spotlight ray, it's like the whole sun. It's all the light. So I know as much as we talk about pillars and things, did I say it right?
I was just wondering.
Oh, okay. So when we look at it that way, that's the intent. It's, oh, this is one we focus on. It's, one is great, but it's not sufficient. It's all of them that make it that place, and that idea about that. And that's where, even in the graphic on the front side, is intended to be that sun rising up around our district with thinking about those pillars coming out of that beam of creating that light. So if we go to the next page, if you don't mind, you will see there the mission and the vision statement. Again, this is the piece that was created, co-created across the district, mission. Again, thinking about why do we exist? Many times, folks will kind of conflate those, and there's not a right or wrong way, just in saying, for us, the mission is our why. And our why is for us to ensure that all students learn and how to learn, to learn in an inclusive, safe, and equitable environment. That promotes engaging learning, critical thinking, and responsible citizenship. So then how do we want to do that? That's where we shift to that vision piece. So we're going to strive to be a model of excellence by fostering compassionate school community, again, where our students, educators, and families collaborate to inspire lifelong learning, personal growth, and leadership in an ever-changing world. And you will see, as we look at the pillars a little bit tonight, I had not anticipated, but that idea about leading and leading our community and leading our world kind of across all of our different groups that we talked with, and that's so much where it became an identifiable piece, that yeah, we're committed to learning and leading. And so that was a piece that was, I found, very motivating, actually. I was like, this is pretty amazing. And our kids were just all over that conversation. They want to make a difference in their own world and the larger world. The next piece I just wanted to highlight here is the collective commitments. And this is basically a question that we had talked with each one of those groups. After this work, and we came up with our best thoughts for the day of our why we exist and how we want to exist, is to make that a reality, what are you committed to do? What should we be committed to do and commit to as an organization moving forward? And you will see that those six items there, again, fostering student-centered education. And there's some description underneath there that talks about looking at curiosity and ensuring that students feel seen and valued, so they can get that sense. We also committed to building strong and collaborative partnerships and opportunities with families, educators, and community to partnership, and this idea about mindset of looking at partnership openness and working on that. Equity and inclusion. We will work intentionally to create environments where everyone is seen, heard, and respected. Every individual is empowered. So you can continue to hear this idea about, back to the empowering all, every person, all means all, not just maybe this group, but not those, it all means all kids, all staff, as much as we can, or community. And then open-mindedness and thinking about fostering a culture of that. We mean looking at adaptable and reflective and embracing new ideas. And that idea about not thinking about what we want our students to necessarily, what they, we want them to not necessarily learn this, we want them to learn how to make decisions and learn how to be constructive thinkers and do that work. Not really what they should think, but how they should think. So as this new information world comes to them even more exponentially, can I process through that information? So that idea about empowering those things. And then the idea about supporting and empowering our staff. This idea about, again, collaboration, ensuring that all of our teachers, all of our staff are supported and valued as we try to meet the needs of our kids. And the last one is cultivating a positive proactive approach. Do you approach things with a positive mindset? And our team not too long ago went through a very short introduction about appreciative inquiry, and there's a lovely short video in there that talks about location, location, location. And what's the first thing I think about is like, okay, is the next one water, or is it, you know? It's not that. It's where are you located? And the idea about, you really, they just said a very simple line. Are you above the line? Are you below the line? And the idea is, is that if you are below that line, you are coming at things from more of a negative mindset. You're almost expecting things to not go well for you. You have this fight or flight kind of response and that thing. Versus if you're above the line, you're located in a positive space. You're expressing a positive intention to some people. You're leaning in, you're listening, you're not waiting for somebody to stop talking so you can respond, you're waiting, oh, that's powerful, can you tell me more about it? So this idea about collaborating and connecting there versus I'm below. And they also talked a little bit about, it's not wrong as human beings, it's in our DNA to be responding back from a fight or flight piece. I mean, that was where we were designed in that way. Is this risk real or not? And so when we perceive things that we think are a risk to us, it's not the old physical risk, and maybe we used to, you know, many, many years ago, but that still is in our DNA. That is, we were built, and those chemicals are released, respond back to that. So how do we keep above that line? And so that's the idea. We're going to come at it conversation by conversation, approach by approach, that, what can I learn out of this experience? How can we work together in that regard so we can stay in a positive space? That just aligns exactly with how we even shaped this vision about what are our strengths? So now we're going to start getting into the next piece. So thank you for letting me give you the kind of background of how we got to here. So you will see on the next page, left and right, basically from the digital piece, you'll see on the left there are pillars of light, and then on the right, you will see the profile of a learner. So in just a moment, we're going to have you do a little bit deeper dive. So you have your clipboards. Thank you very much, Kim, for the clipboards that I'm in. You have, on the front of that clipboard, you have your assignments. So you see your chart there. We have our six pillars identified there. So on the first piece there, skills and knowledge. So Julia, you're going to partner with Alex. And you can read the other two, the partners you have all the way, pillars two, three, four, five, and six. I will point out to the pillars to you. We have right over here pillar one, I think, is right behind Lisa, and it just goes over this way, two, three, four, five, six. And in a moment, I'm going to ask you and your partner to go to those pillars. And at those pillars, you will see you have a second page on your clipboard. So this is the conversation I'm asking you to have. As the picture of the empowering all again on there, so we're going to start there. We're going to be looking at these six pillars. The first question is, as partners, you'll go to your space, we'll ask you to take a moment to please read through the description that you have in the full document. And in that description, you will see basically the description of the pillar, this one, knowledge and skills. Take a moment when you get to your table, read through this component. Please read through the aspirations piece, and then these empowerment actions. Once your team is done, I will ask you to go ahead and look at the questions here. The first one is, after you've read it, what part of this pillar resonates with you the most? So you probably, you don't know the answer yet, because you have, well, maybe, but read this and say, what resonates with you most? There isn't a wrong answer. It's what is it that resonates with you? And then when I get a sense where we're going, I'm going to ask you to kind of go ahead. Guess it's kind of like speed dating, but you don't get to change partners. So you got to go, one goes to two, three, four, five, six. Everybody will go around to each of the six pillars. So after we've done our six rotations, we'll come back to the table, and we'll share what you guys came out with. This process is similar, not exact, to what we'll be going through with our PTOs, with our students, and with a group last week of some of our entire technology team. And so the idea is to get more familiar with the pillars and then looking about the backside poll of five alerter. But step one, powering all, you will find your pillar, find your partner, scan, read, and then we'll be facilitating the first question of what part of this pillar resonates with you most? Please take a pen, write whatever you want in there, and then I'll rotate team around, and we'll ultimately come back and share all. Any thoughts or questions or... So now, as a teacher, for a teacher, I would ask one of you to please report the directions back to me to make sure everybody's on the same page. But I have faith that we all know where we're going and what we're doing. So find your pillar, find your partner, and we'll go ahead and get started. So I know our mark could be off a little.
All right, so thank you for doing that. Neil, I appreciate the first rotation there because I don't think I would have made that call, so thanks very much for getting this moving.
Teamwork with Bill, for sure.
So just in general, just got to open the conversation up at the table. So some of the guiding questions were, you know, maybe what were, you know, some of the things that resonated with you most across the pillars. Another one is thinking about how do you see them connecting and things. So really, and you stay with the same partner through six of those pillars and think about is there a theme that kind of connected and generated across your thing. So just if you can share out a little bit about kind of where you found your conversation being led, that would be great.
I think I found that before I didn't really appreciate how much they really relied on and interconnected with each other. So some of the things that we're talking about building skills will help with the social emotional learning part and the belonging obviously dovetails in that. And then how teachers being seen as leaders will help students understand what it means to be a leader and to, you know, maybe mimic the things that they see their teachers doing. So I really love how interwoven things really were when you start talking to, talking about them because on the base of it, you're like, oh, there are six different pillars. But then when you really start talking about what it means and following those sub bullet points, it really does like just dovetail nicely and create that picture of what we want our community to be.
Thank you. Resonate off of that or talk about your own conversations?
My trio. We had reconnected with that. And if I may say so myself, reiterated the phrase that it's the sun, not a spotlight on a couple of occasions. We also saw a lot of interdisciplinary throughout, the words interdisciplinary. We saw belongings connectedness to well-being and global perspectives and more global perspective actually resonated throughout a lot of the pillars.
And the concept of global citizenry, like we recognize that they're sort of a, you're preparing students for what's next and to be just good global citizens in a way that's meaningful to them, that they're at the center of all of that. It seems like a common theme through most of the pillars, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, from the student centered learning to the sustainability and global citizenship, it felt like we're designing a way of learning that really helps students see themselves as agents
All right, so thank you for doing that. Neil, I appreciate the first rotation there because I don't think I would have made that call, so thanks very much for getting this moving.
Teamwork with Bill, for sure.
So just in general, just got to open the conversation up at the table. So you know, some of the guiding questions were, you know, maybe what were, you know, some of the things that resonated with you most across the pillars. Another one is thinking about how do you see them connecting and things? So really, and you stay with the same partner through six of those pillars and think about, is there a theme that kind of connected and generated across your thing? So just if you can share out a little bit about kind of where you found your conversation being, that would be great.
I think I found that before I didn't really appreciate how much they really relied on and interconnected with each other. So some of the things that we're talking about, building skills will help with the social emotional learning part and the belonging obviously dovetails in that. And then how teachers being seen as leaders will help students understand what it means to be a leader and to, you know, maybe mimic the things that they see their teachers doing. So I really love how interwoven things really were when you start talking to, talking about them, because on the base of it, you're like, oh, there's six different pillars. But then when you really start talking about what it means and following those sub bullet points, it really does like just dovetail nicely and create that picture of what we want our community to be.
Thank you. Resonate off of that or talk about your own conversations?
My trio. We had, we connected with that. And if I may say so myself, reiterated the phrase that it's the sun, not a spotlight on a couple of occasions. We also saw a lot of like interdisciplinary throughout, the words interdisciplinary. We saw belongings, connectedness to well-being and global perspectives and more global, global perspective actually resonated throughout a lot of the pillars.
And the globe, the concept of global citizenry, like we recognize that they're sort of a, you're preparing students for what's next and to be just good global citizens in a way that's sort of meaningful to them, that they're at the center of all of that.
Yes.
Seems like a common theme through most of the pillars around.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, from the student-centered learning to the sustainability and global citizenship, it felt like we're designing a way of learning that really helps students see themselves as agents of change and also responsible for their community, for their environment. And we talked a lot about sort of students sort of rising to the occasion. If you, the more you give them choice, the more you give them a voice in, in what it is that they want to do and the paths they want to follow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think just to continue building on that, and Bill, you said it really well, and it's about leadership too. Did you want to, you want to talk more about the leadership aspect?
Go for it.
Oh, okay, sure. You brought it up, I was trying to give you credit.
Thank you.
No, I think we just noticed through all the pillars, this, this thread of leadership, especially in the learner-centered leadership in pillar three, but also really connecting to pillar four for sustainability. I mean, that global, as you were saying, that global citizenship and how we, you know, there's a lot of great language in here encouraging students to take the initiative and be leaders in that space.
Thank you.
We also talked about, we felt like if there was a pyramid, that well-being would be at the base of that pyramid. Because if you're not feeling good about yourself and you're not feeling like you belong, you can't, these other things don't happen. Leadership doesn't happen, learning doesn't happen. So felt like that was, that was a critical piece. Make sure that, that the kids feel like, they feel good about themselves, self-confidence, self-esteem.
Yeah, Margie, we talked about that a bit.
Yeah, we had a very similar conversation. Yes, we did. We, we talked about the reality that without feeling that you're respected, whether it's a student feeling respected or a staff member feeling respected, and without feeling that the people with whom you're interacting in your school community recognize that you have dignity, that nobody can take your dignity away and that, you know, for all of the reasons that, you know, are easy to imagine, like on occasion, people experience interactions where they feel that their dignity was disrespected and that those seem to be the moments where it feels like there's the greatest opportunity to do better, you know? Because by contrast, when kids feel seen, when staff members feel seen, feel respected, feel that they're treated with, you know, a feeling of self-worth, or it creates and maintains their feeling of self-worth, like that's what leads to the highs and the good memories. So, yeah, we spent a good bit of time just kind of observing that dynamic. And I would say that just with respect to each of the pillars, it feels as if there's just a lot of intentionality around having asked our community and having answered the question, who are we trying to be for each other, for our kids, who do we want our kids to be for themselves and for our society? It feels really intentional and, and hopeful. And also, I recognize so many things that we are already doing so much of very well. And then also opportunities where, wow, if we can really get to this, we will be even better. So I found it really.
I'll just, thank you, Margie, for saying that, because we recognize the same thing. And it felt like so much of this, it's like, well, yeah, but we've never written it down in such a structured way. And what it does is it provides a benchmark for us to start to measure our improvement. Like we now know, okay, yeah, we know we want to do that. We do a good job here and here, but maybe not so much there. There, there's an area we can focus on, establish a baseline, recognize the improvement over time. So we all recognize pretty much that same thing, that there's a continuum there that we're all striving for, but when you document what you're trying to do like this, it's very powerful.
This sets the stage for the next five years. This is what this is for. Who was the, who, did you write this?
So, actually, with Kim's support and things, the, the hundreds of different documents and pages and things, they were all handwritten along, if you remember, we went to those. Then Kim went and digitized those and so then we looked at how, how many of those items were repeated and repeated. And so then we, we just kept distilling and distilling that down. And, and then that's basically where we landed with those pieces. And, and some, I'm like, oh, I remember exactly that's the, from that group. Pretty darn close to it. And so that was a piece that came through, is you just kept turning that through. And then, and then that's where the thread kept coming. And so that's basically how we're landing.
Yeah, like our community wrote, our community wrote this. And I had a moment of that too, reading some of the bullets, thinking like, I think we talked about that at one of the things. And, and I think, one of the things I think is really important in this document that I noticed is just like the evidence that each area, you're trying to say like, how are we going to measure this? Like that's a really important part of this plan, is that it could have been just what are our aspirations, right? And that still would have been really lovely, just to set some aspirations for ourselves. But this has actions and has outcomes that we want to measure. And that's, I could think, a critical piece of this work that we have been, like, has been intangible to us. And so I feel really excited to have those opportunities to be able to measure things, reflect on them and, and change course if we need to.
Thank you. If it's all right, then let me take that part just a little bit. And so out of that, like those empowerment actions, so these are really, if they're on this document, those are at a more of a higher district level and you're, you're connecting with maybe every kid in the class or property. Then at the building level, each building will have their own empowerment plan. So they were identified for the building, because one elementary is going to be different than the other middle school, but it'll be aligned to the pillars. It'll be specifically identified which element, it'll identify which team is working on what. And then out of that, there'll be what identified as those sparkles. So those are strategic and we're looking at those measurable and action-oriented, there is results, and there's a timeline. So those are all have that action plan to it. So if we flash forward maybe 18, 24 months, then closing our, our table here, bring in and say, hey, walk us from the pillar right all the way down to the classroom level and back and forth. So that's going to be the piece that'll come out of it. And in my head, I said, no, but I can't stop. So I want to do the next one really fast. And so, and then actually it's got to be fast.
We also said no.
Oh, great. Okay. So Kim, I know I handed in Rory's petition for.
Well, last time, the first time he was in Ireland, right?
All right. So the only one we need is the one pager on this next piece. So it's just the one on the backside of the pillars. This one is the profile of a learner. So we will give roughly four minutes, let's say. We're going to go back to the one table, no rotation. Now think about the first one with systems and structures and processes and support for our teachers. Now think about what, at the other side of this is that we're looking for these student outcomes. So here's all this input coming in from the system of good professional learning, a calendar that supports that work, nice learning resources, thinking about the opportunities to connect there, what's the student outcome? And what we're looking at is, this is the profile of a learner that we'd be looking at coming out of the KST school district. So you will see on there, here's a little different one in here, because it has specifically in there, I can statements. So these are thinking about a student being able to say these things. And you will see there's six around there. So we're just going to get that first one. What does the KST profile of a learner mean to you? So we'll give you those four minutes. So you go back to the first pillar you started with last time, and I'll call you back in about four minutes, we'll share out. So just do a quick read of the profile of a learner. So, and this one here, and think about profile of a learner, thinking about, you know, what are the student outcomes? And I'll just start with us a little bit. We had a couple of things, and actually it ended up being the Prajus's Empowered components. I'll hit the first one, but the idea about I am a brave and confident leader, that was just the first part. And I talked a little bit about the idea about bravery for one is not necessarily the same for the other. And the idea of when a student can realize that I pressed myself and I, and I got through the storm, and for me it was a storm, somebody else may not have been, and then come out on the backside succeeding, that was a part that I hadn't really connected before. And so for me to think about, you know, the kids that I had in my classroom and so, for one kid, it's like, oh, okay, that, that's a really big challenge that that student realized, faced and got through. Maybe the other student wouldn't even have thought about doing that. But that idea about bravery and connecting, pushing through, can mean for everybody. It doesn't mean you have to run the fastest or jump the fastest or do this the most. It's like, for you, you know yourself. And then you actually got the second part of that, part two, yeah.
I was drawn to the same empowerment statements, but I focused more on the one that came after the one that Ray was focused on, because earlier we had been talking about wanting to be a school district that really inspires kids to enjoy learning, to, to want to learn and to want to come back, to continue to learn, hopefully for life. And so I thought that this statement spoke to that. And I really appreciated that it's not at the expense of being part of a community, but rather part of what the work entails is also being reminded that I'm here to help and inspire other people too. So just thinking about a more collaborative, community-minded approach to education rather than a competitive environment. So I liked that a lot.
And Neil, share out your high-level thoughts or anything you had from the group?
So I had one overwhelming thought. If we have a student or multiple students that can affirmatively make these six statements, we've done our job.
This guy right here.
You know, and he was my partner and I really loved our conversations, Ian. I, I think you are the embodiment of us doing our job correctly. And it, it'll be exciting to see, you know, with having these pillars in place, you know, we're going to have students that can take over the world and look at a global environment and ensure that people care about each other and feel that belonging and have balance and, and self-knowledge and awareness. So.
And I know we've moved to the profile of a learner, Burr. I feel like we moved the conversation. I'd love to hear from Ian, sorry to put you on the spot. As someone who's graduating and looking at the pillars, you know, what are you most excited about? What do you think is going to be, you know, like what's different? Like what are the things that are sort of striking for you that you think, wow, this is really cool, students are really going to appreciate this?
Um, yeah, here, give me one second. So.
Sure.
I guess the biggest thing for me was in terms of the profile of a learner, definitely resilience and being well-balanced. I think our culture right now, whether it's school or, you know, more societal, we have a bit too much of a affinity for productivity. And I think just being able to take a step back and rest for the sake of rest, not resting so that you can go to work and do better, is a big thing that we're lacking. So I think being able to, I guess, I forget who was saying it, but someone was talking about, you know, a genuine enjoyment of learning. You know, there's a saying that if you enjoy what you work, you never work a day in your life. And even if we're not, you know, waking up in the morning, jumping out of bed, I can't wait to learn, I think being able to walk in and at least enjoy your, every class ideally, a little bit, makes school better and it kind of prevents that burnout that we see a lot right now. I think just passion and, you know, that balance between work to any degree, and then, you know, enjoying the work itself is a big part of what we need.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Well, thank you, Julie. I appreciate it. Thanks.
I just, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on, on one thing that just really resonated on, for me personally. And it's, it's written all over here, but for a community to put, and for our conversation, it's always, it's, it's been learning, 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 and then not really the education or the memorization piece. And only on bullet point five, aspiration number five on pillar one, does the term academic achievement come up and nowhere else in this document. And I think that's so important, because I truly believe if all of this is capable and we pull it all off, the unwritten evidence of empowerment will be academic success in that, in that sense. But even with the educators, it's about how their learners, not their AP scores that their students get or things like that. And it, it makes me really proud to be part of a district that really looks at things that way and not about what are our scores, where do we rank, where are our kids going to school? That all comes out of this. That's a byproduct of the process that we put our, our students through and our faculty through. So thanks to all that, that put that in here, recognize it and then push it.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Thanks. So we're going to go to the budget piece of the next.
Yeah, right. Thank you for this work. And we're really excited for you to be rolling it out across through the PTOs and look for other opportunities for our community to learn more about it. I know that there's interest, and people are reading things and have questions. And so I think availing themselves to the different opportunities that will be available through the PTO. And I think, can we encourage people to go to PTO meetings that are not at their own school, maybe?
When we did the first time, some people did some, because it worked better meetings and stuff.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we'll continue that conversation.
So certainly, if you have a day or an evening that's better for you, and you see it's on the calendar, avail yourself to that, and that's really welcomed.
Thank you.
Great.
So we're going to hand it off to Lisa, I think. And we're going to go ahead, and we'll get the slide change here to the PowerPoint. And I know we went through just about almost all of these slides before, so Lisa's going to go through this at a pretty brisk pace, probably even more than we had practiced. So I know we practiced a little bit before, we'll speed it up even a little bit more, Lisa, and stuff. And because I took too long. But stop us along the way anytime, any important questions. There are a couple of pieces we want to highlight in here again. Obviously, what we're putting on the ballot in the spring is something we want to make sure that's crystal clear. So thank you, Lisa, and we'll hopefully get that screen change in the back.
So luckily, you have seen most of these slides already, so it's okay if they're not quite up yet. But yeah, so thank you again for joining us tonight. And really, as Ray mentioned, as Dr. Blanchard mentioned, that we're going to briefly review this budget as we've discussed it over the past couple of months, but we are going to pause and spend a little time on the propositions as, because we haven't looked at them yet. And I'm just, you know, going to keep these, you know, the goal, the board leadership goals, the leadership goal, the KLC 2030 plan, which we just want to...
Oh, we just talked about that somewhere.
Well, it's that one. As well as fiscal stewardship. And I'm just going to, you know, our budget drivers, but I'm going to just pause for a moment, again, at revenue drivers, because I just, we really, you know, want to emphasize that in the 25, 26 year, you know, when, as we began budgeting, we were not made aware that our aid ratios were going to decrease and decrease so dramatically. And so it was, you know, a shift that we had to do quite quickly as far as prioritizing and in order to, you know, knowing that we are under a tax cap environment, so there's only so much that we can make up that revenue that we lost. So, but, and again, you know, and these shows here are the differences and the decreases and the percentage, the percent decrease in each of these areas. And, you know, belonging and highlights of everything that we went through, again, all the professional learning and our academic highlights and everything, our infrastructure as well, enrollment, class size. It's okay, we'll pause here. But those again, and, you know, and all the exciting things that goes on in KLC that you can look at those slides and see, and the highlights. But here, we just want to talk a little bit more about the energy performance contract, and what is an EPC. And just to give a little more background, so an EPC enables school districts to improve energy efficiency generally with minimal to no impact on school district budgets. The district enters into an agreement with an energy service company, which we refer to as an ESCO, to install energy-efficient measures such as solar, in our case, systems to reduce energy, to reduce energy use as well as reduce utility costs. The ESCO guarantees that the money saved on energy bills will cover the cost of the project over time, which cannot exceed 18 years, that project length that you're looking at to, for the cash flow, so that the project pays for itself over that 18-year period. While EPCs are generally designed to be budget-neutral factors like state aid, rebates, incentives, and financing costs can affect overall cash flow, since the contract hasn't been finalized yet, we can't unequivocally state whether there will be no tax impact. We will continue to work closely with our professional representatives to negotiate a contract with the ESCO that is budget-neutral, and will present it to the board for consideration once finalized. So what you will see later in this presentation is a resolution for the proposed proposition. This voted proposition does not decide whether we'll proceed with the EPC. What a school district, a school district is permitted to enter into an EPC for energy efficiency improvements without voter authorization. The proposition, Prop 3, simply allows us to qualify for the additional 10% aid, again, that will offset, again, offset the costs. And if we, and the term says, if we determine to move forward with the EPC, as, you know, as far as, as long as it's in the best interest of the district. So...
So Lisa, I know I tell my kids there's no such thing as free money, but this kind of sounds like free money.
It's extra, yeah. So we want to make the...
So we get 10% back just by asking community, please let us do this, and then we'll get 10% additional from the state. Thank you.
Exactly, right. And, and just, Dr. Blanchard, thank you for bringing that. Also, in the project cost, you'll see 12 million maximum. And I was just on a meeting this afternoon with, you know, with Honeywell and Energia, Mike LaVoy, our Director of Facilities, and we're looking at probably after they've, we're about 75% completed with the energy audit, maybe a little further along, so we're hopeful that we'll have some answers soon. But our project probably will be around $7 to $8 million. But the reason that we put 12 million there is, if we went too low, the state wouldn't give us the aid above that number. So if we said 7 million, it comes at 7.5, that 500,000, we would not receive aid on, or, you know, or if we said 10 or 11, or whatever the case is. So that is not the amount that, that the project will cost, but it is just simply to ensure that we get the aid on the entire contract, the EPC project, so.
All right. So just for clarification, one more time, just so people understand, Proposition 3, whether or not we sign an energy performance contract is a board decision that does not require a vote. We're voting on this so that we can access additional state aid. So the state says, hey, you can do this without your community approving it, because it's, the board can enter into an energy performance contract. But if you engage your community and tell them about this so they're aware, and they vote on it, we're going to give you 10% more money. So that is our hope, that the community can support our intention to enter into an energy performance contract, so that if we do, we can access 10% in additional aid.
That's very clear, though, looking at the language. It says, shall the Board of Education be authorized? So it may come across to the voter as though the voter is authorizing the boards. I'm not sure.
Right. So we, let's, let's...
I've, yeah, we'll come to that, but I, yes.
But for anyone who's watching, or if you want to refer anyone to this, want to make sure it's very clear what that 10% is about.
Purpose, I think, is to say, if you don't want to engage your community, you can do so, but there's a 10% penalty. If you do engage your community and get their approval, then there's no 10% penalty. That's basically what they're saying.
Yeah. Yeah. And we want to engage our community. We think it's exciting for us to be able to do this work. And it's great for, once the energy performance contact expires, then it's just gain for us, because we're going to have a lower overall energy cost. So, okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give Lisa a tiny break here. This page here is our class size parameters, our contractually obligated class size, as many of you've seen before. Very happy to report that a majority of our classes around the district are at goal, and every class around the district is at range or below. Thanks. And for our staffing changes, we're recommending three additional elementary school teachers, one at Increase Miller, and two at Katona Elementary, an additional teacher at John J. Middle School, and this is all budget-to-budget, by the way. For the contingency position, budget-to-budget, that's a reduction of one. That next line down there that you see is the overall estimated reductions of non-replacements of teachers who are retiring or resigning. That's somewhere between four and six reductions at the moment, with a total tentative reduction of one to three. Okay, Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you, Neil. So that brings us to, again, the proposed budget. The current year budget is $124,318,762. We are proposing a budget of $127,410,469, which is an increase of $3,091,707. This is a budget-to-budget percent increase of 2.49%, and a property tax levy increase of 3.29% levy-to-levy. And this percent increase actually meets the New York State tax cap limit. So we're right at the limit, we're not above the limit. That means that it just requires a simple majority vote in order to pass the budget. And so the key, just quickly, we went through this a couple weeks ago, but, you know, we just really want to emphasize that our budget-to-budget increase, as I just mentioned, is $3,091,707. And here you see these major increases total $3,8467. So just the major increases really absorb the majority of the money that we could increase our entire budget. And those areas are benefits, salaries, as we know, which is generally roughly 80% of our budget, Bose's hardware replacement, which is our devices, our iPads for our K8 students, and as well as our MacBooks for our secondary students. And what had happened is in prior years, because in 2020, when we did go to a one-to-one device during March 2020, March, April, May, one-to-one device program, we began using surplus funds in the current year. And as we see surpluses in our funds, you know, becoming stronger and stronger as, or less and less, excuse me, as they become less and less, we want to ensure that that money is built into the budget proper, so we always have that program in place. Again, with our revenues, you know, we have no control over state aid or tax, the tax-based growth factor. So again, we have, you know, seen a major decline in our state aid, as well as we did review, actually, the decline in the governor's numbers were about 1.3 million. What we did is we reviewed the supporting data, the backup data that goes into those numbers, and compared budget projections with current expenditures, and developed our own projections based on current year expenditures, because the budget, the governor's numbers, as well as the numbers that the legislators use, are based on budget numbers. So they're based on our 24, 25 budget. It comes from our ST3 numbers that we submit to the state. And we're looking at actual expenditures, so it's more current data. And tax cap, you know, just the ones, just always want to just emphasize, you know, for so long it was a 2% tax cap. And it's not really 2%, we're not, it's not really just 2% growth. The 2% is what the max of the, that we can adjust the tax cap, is one of the tax cap factors, which is related to CPI. So if CPI is greater than 2%, we can only increase, we can only use 2% in that factor in calculating the tax cap. In the next slide, you'll actually see the breakdown there, again, where you see the tax-based growth factor, as well as our allowable levy growth factor. That's the one that's maxed at 2%. But you can see the breakdown of all of the calculation there. And, and again, we are right at the tax levy, right after, next slide? Yes, there you go. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have? Oh, there's a slide missing here. Oh, here we are. Okay. The tax levy calculation, it's just, again, it just shows our other revenues. We are, in order to offset the decrease in state aid, we are appropriating some additional reserves in order to offset the loss in state aid and to stay at the tax levy or tax cap. And those reserves do get set in July. So the final reserve numbers will be set in July, but that's what we're proposing, is to appropriate additional reserves. And, right, projected revenues is just, there you go, perfect. The projected revenues uses a breakdown, again, of where we're seeing revenues in new line for next year is day tuition, other districts, and that is tuition that we charge other school districts in order for their students to be enrolled in our specialized, specialized programs. So that is just a new source of revenue. And again, those are empty available seats in those programs. The tax rate is the amount of money that you multiply your assessed value in order to generate your tax bill, essentially. These are projected numbers. We receive our final numbers when we set the tax levy in, also in July. So just in summary, this budget maintains all current student programming while adding teams to eighth grade in a fiscally responsible manner, and continuing to prioritize favorable class sizes, maintains support for all students in professional learning, incorporates additional debt payment for the approved October 2022 bond referendum to support the significant infrastructure upgrades and enhancements that are going on in all five buildings, as well as being mindful of taxpayers and holding to the tax levy, as well as, there isn't anything in the tax levy or anything for the EPC. So it's $127,410,469, proposed tax, proposed budget. So Proposition 1 is simply approval of the budget, or is just simply voting on the budget. Proposition 2 is one that you have seen in prior years, and typically, Prop 2, what we were using is excess funds from the current school year to replace buses, is what we've typically used, Prop 2, for the excess funds. For next year, we're proposing that we use them for electrical infrastructure upgrades. There's quite, there's a good amount of upgrades that need to happen in order for us to eventually transition to all, 100% electric fleet, electric school bus fleet. So again, as we look at and do our long-range planning, we're looking at a, you know, we're looking at doing it in a phased approach. And so when we do have the funds available, we want to ensure, you know, we want to take, you know, you set those monies aside and start to work on the parts that we can in this approach, so it isn't such a large impact. And currently still is 2035, that school districts have to be 100% electrified fleets of school buses. And Proposition 3 is, again, it is about the additional 10% state aid that associated with the energy performance contract. And as Julie had stated earlier and explained, that it is, the Board of Education can approve an energy performance contract. This is just approving the additional 10%. And as Rory said, you know, on the other side, it would be like a penalty if we didn't get the extra 10%, right? And it is, the state actually does refer to it as a 10% incentive aid. So it is considered an incentive. So, and I know that you kind of have to read through all of the language to get to, you have to read through 12 lines, as I pointed out to my attorney, to get to the 10% piece. But again, the language has to be written specifically so the state education department sees that we made it very clear to our voters in order for us to give us the 10% incentive. But that's why we added that phrase to the title of the proposition. So it's upfront, that is just simply the additional 10% that we're vote, that this proposition is addressing. So I shall turn it over to, is there any questions?
Just because we didn't say so at the beginning, like, this is our fourth, I think, read through this, right? So it's like, if people are watching the budget review for the first time, those guys are really quiet. We've been through this many, many times, and this is just one more final review before the board adopts it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So I know that the attorneys have looked at these or have written these. So it can't be, shall the Board of Education authorize? It has to be, be authorized?
They, this is how they wrote it.
You see, this is such a subject.
Yeah. Does it have to get it right for the law?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to get it right for the law.
That's fine. So we just need to make sure we really do some good community outreach so people understand this.
And that was where the type, at the top, we can have there, so it pops up, Proposition 3, additional 10%.
Additional 10% state aid. Yeah, good. Okay.
And we can't just put a statement at the top, which clearly said, "The board may authorize an energy performance contract without voter approval. However, receiving approval allows the district to unlock an additional," like, just make it very clear, we can't do that?
My understanding is no. My understanding is no.
No.
Lisa, lots of good ideas, yeah.
Clear communication, but not the words.
So that's, yeah. I just really encourage our community to support this.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the hard work that went into this, from you, the rest of the Cabinet, Ray, and all of the administrators. I mean, this is not an easy feat, so a lot of long hours by all of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
And I really appreciate the new way we reviewed it this year. It made a lot more sense to me, the way my mind works. Julia's more the numbers person, but it just made more, it made a lot of sense this year, going through the process, so thank you. So right now, this is just the proposed budget, so this is an opportunity for us to approve this as our budget. So I'm happy to make the motion to approve the proposed 2526 school budget. Would someone like to second that? Seconded by Barbara? Oh. Yep. Do I need to do all the propositions separately? Okay. Yeah. Okay.
I think, like, you, I don't think so.
Okay. Each, okay, sure. So make 10.01 as its own resolution. Okay. So I will start with making a motion to approve 10.01. Seconded by Rory. All is in favor? Seven, zero. Great. Someone like to make?
10.02.
Okay, so Lorraine has made a motion to move 10.02. Would someone like to second? Seconded by John. All is in favor?
Aye.
Great. Maybe each do one. Move 10.03. Marjorie's moving 10.03. Seconded by Bill. All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Great. I'm going to move 10.04. Seconded by Lorraine. All is in favor?
Aye. I'll move 10.05.
Excellent. Motion by Rory. Seconded by Barbara. Kim, this is very fast. I'm sorry. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Great. Excellent. 10.06, I'm happy to move that. This is our last motion. Seconded by John. All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Great. Did we do all the numbers? Got it? Okay. Excellent. Again, thank you very much for all your effort. And again, I think we talked about this once before, but in order to achieve this budget with the major drivers equalling all but about $80,000 of the major increases, it really required you to be very focused on holding things level and finding opportunities for savings, and we just really appreciate the effort to do that, so that we could bring this to the community where we are. So, thank you.
Supporting the budget. Thank you.
Yeah. Now we have an opportunity for public comment, Rich. So I assume you may be aware, our public comment is an opportunity for us to hear from the community, and we will reflect on what we hear from you, and likely not reflect on it this evening, but we'll return to it during our next board meeting. You have three minutes, and Kim has a timer for you, just to help you. Oh, you have a timer as well? Okay. So can we not use Kim's timer? You're going to keep to your timer? She's going to turn it on anyway. So the timer, the timer will be green for two minutes and 30 seconds. She's not going to do it? Okay. Excellent. We do have a timer. So welcome, and if you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
Yes, good evening. Rich Flaren, 27-year Goldens Bridge resident, more than two-decade town volunteer, and current town board member since 2021. I do love Lewisboro. I'm here this evening to cordially invite members of this board, district administration, committee members, or inappropriate combination thereof, to meet with the Lewisboro Town Board in a public setting, whether at a town board work session or a community forum, as an example, to discuss the potential future and mutually beneficial opportunities which can arise from KLSD's recent decision not to renew the town's longstanding lease of the property on Banton Road, formerly housing LES. As you know, the town of Lewisboro was leased the property for quite a few years at this location to house important town facilities and operations, from our town police and town court, to various town departments and a gym, with extensive parks and recreation programming. And with KLSD's decision not to renew the town's lease, we have to figure out, as a community, where these important town facilities and operations will go for the next generation and beyond. Now, I personally believe, as a 27-year resident and taxpayer, father of two John Jay graduates, and now town board member, that there is an incredible opportunity here for KLSD and the town of Lewisboro to engage in an open and transparent dialogue with Lewisboro about what can come next at this site. My personal belief is that working together as partners, on behalf of the residents and taxpayers, like a phoenix rising from the ashes, a brand-new state-of-the-art facility could be developed on the site, a centrally-located town campus with a new court, new police facility, and community center for the entire community to use and enjoy, with a corresponding long-term economic benefit for KLSD. We can think outside of the box. We should at least, after all, talk about it. After all, we teach our kids that if you believe, you can achieve, and I believe in that certainly now. And if it turns out that such a redevelopment plan or opportunity or something similar for the former LES site is not possible, then at the very least, we can work together collaboratively on the town's exit strategy from LES in a well-timed, well-planned, and well-executed way, so the town has sufficient time to plan and decide how we best move forward in a most seamless and fiscally responsible way as possible for all. I, for one, look forward to this potential great opportunity for KLSD and the town of Lewisboro to work together for the betterment of our greater community. Thank you for listening. Thank you for all you do, your service and dedication on behalf of our community, and have a great evening.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to close public comment. That takes us to the consent agenda, so I'd like to move the consent agenda. Someone like to second? Seconded by Bill. All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Great. I'm going to find the donation. Sorry, I just have to find the donation page, because I know we have one in the class of 77. Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'm going to like to just recognize item 16.01 on the agenda, and thank Carl and Jill Kramer for a donation of $1,000 towards the class of 1977 scholarship. And if someone would like to move that resolution so that we can accept that donation, that would be great. Moved by Lorraine. Seconded by Marjorie. All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Excellent. Thank you to Carl and Jill Kramer for that, and for the class of 77 to continue having that scholarship. And this takes us to item 17, which is an opportunity for board dialogue and discussion.
I just want to say thank you to the community for their continued generosity. It's a rare meeting that we don't have some sort of gift being presented to our school district, and so that means a lot. That means that people care about what we're doing, and so we don't take it for granted, and we are very appreciative.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have one quick comment on agenda item 1303. Once again, we're seeing an athletic team looking to bring 40 students, in this case, to another state on a plane for substantial cost to families, approximately $1,000 per family, that we're asking families to reach out. We had this on the last agenda, related to the women's lacrosse team, this one's related to the men's varsity baseball team. I just think we have to find a way to cap this or to somehow support it. I don't know why we have to go to, actually, I'm not sure whether it's Arizona or Florida, because it says both on the agenda item, but wherever they're going, I'm not sure that they have to go there. We can play baseball right here, we can play baseball in New Jersey overnight, we don't have to go to Port St. Lucie or Arizona to do so. And I think expecting our families to pony up another $1,000 per family to have the privilege of being on the varsity baseball team, I think that that's, and I know it's probably billed as being optional, but if you want to play baseball, you're going to be going on that trip. So I just encourage, encourage the board and the district to consider putting a cap on how much we're asking families to pay for sporting events. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would actually like to second that and include any type of spirit packs in that as well. I know from experience, those get out of hand as well, and it's, each team wants to have the nicest gear, better than the year before. So you add spirit packs and spring break trips and things like that, and we really are asking students to pay to play, and that's not what a public athletic experience should be.
I just briefly see that resonates with me, especially in light of the things we're talking about in terms of having students have a consistent experience and having equity. So the things that you're both saying do resonate with me as well.
I think this is an opportunity, you know, for us to think about how Ray can start this conversation in the district, and certainly know that he would have our support if, you know, we'd talk about it at the board level if it came there, but, and different board members may feel differently, but I think it's, I think it's definitely a conversation that we should have, and I expressed this at the last meeting as well. I do think for families who have multiple children, multiple sports, and public education, and the experience to play in a high school sporting, or middle school even, for some kids, it's their opportunity to play when they can't be part of private travel-type programs, because those are exorbitantly expensive. So I just want to make sure we're not limiting that opportunity anyway, so.
So like, we have quite a few board members who are concerned about this, enough to, you know, I don't want to make a proposal or a resolution or anything like that, but I think that we should give it some, give it adequate thought.
Yeah.
Could be an interesting conversation to have with parent council, because I think we would also be heartened to learn of some initiatives that are underway. I'm thinking about, for example, the upcoming Sustainability Symposium, where I know our middle school students are working on a spirit wear swap, like, taking your spirit wear and going through your inventory, and, you know, trying to figure out, is there somebody else who could use these items and really benefit from things that maybe you're not using anymore? And I think if we talked with parent council, we might be able to kind of round out the conversation, hearing about both concerns and also opportunities and things that are underway in our schools to promote equity and to sort of think creatively about some of these issues. So that might just be a place to start to learn more.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So future meetings? Tomorrow morning, oh, the Policy Committee meeting is canceled. I'll read that. Next Friday, it's already April, this year is flying. Next Friday is April 4th, and there'll be a Sustainability Committee meeting at 8:15 in the district office. The following Wednesday, there'll be a Finance Committee meeting at 7:00 PM in the district office. Thursday, April 10th, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in the library. Tuesday, April 27th, that is the BOSI's budget meeting, so that's why we're meeting on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday, that is the same date throughout New York State. So we're having a Tuesday meeting, April 22nd, here in the library at 7:30. And then that week, on Friday, April 25th, there'll be a Policy Committee meeting at 9:00 AM in the district office. And that's Earth Day. And that's Earth Day. Great. Ray, would you like to make any closing comments?
I think I extended my time. I appreciate you not cutting my mic off.
I will make a motion to adjourn, if someone like to second. Seconded by Marjorie. All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.